Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk-Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected, follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
We good?
Ready when you are, Rich.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 2nd special virtual meeting for the zoning board of adjustments. The next meeting we have scheduled will be, that's on the cheat sheet, on June 24th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, which will also be virtual via Zoom. Now, before we get started tonight, I just have something that I need to read to the public. So I will go ahead and read this in. As Chair of the Merrimack's Zoning Board of Adjustment, due to COVID-19 crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. So we are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing either of the following numbers, which are 1-312-626-6799, or 1-929-205-6099. Our meeting ID is 940-0667-7844. The meeting may also be viewed on Merrimack TV Channel 20 through Comcast, or the Merrimack TV Facebook Live page, which is facebook.com/merrimacktv. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided in the meeting agenda posted on the Town of Merrimack's website at www.merrimacknh.gov/zoningdashboard. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please email tthompson@merrimacknh.gov. D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. So we will start the roll call now. I am Rich Coniskew, Chairman of the Zoning Board. There is nobody in the room with me. I will pass to Drew.
Drew Duffy, there's nobody in the room with me either.
Your location also, Drew?
Oh, Merrimack, New Hampshire.
And Patrick?
Patrick Twire, Merrimack, New Hampshire, and I am all alone.
Lynn?
Lynn Christensen, and I am all by myself, except Boggs is sitting here.
And Ben?
Ben Niles, also in Merrimack, I am all alone too.
Okay.
For the public's benefit, I'm Tim Thompson. I'm staff, the Community Development Director for the Town of Merrimack. I am currently located in my home in Concord, in a room alone, but my family is also in the house with me.
Alright, so for tonight, Ben Niles will be sitting in for Rob Buckley, and Drew Duffy will be sitting in for Kathleen Stroud. Alright, so...
Rich?
Yes?
Kathy's trying to get on and she's having trouble. Nick, can you give her a call?
Sure. One more time? I'll call it.
Thank you. All clear.
Should we give it a few moments for Kathleen to join?
We read the preamble and the process for swearing in the people who will be speaking tonight, and then should Kathy get in here, we can have her identify her location.
Yep.
Okay, in that case, Patrick, do you happen to have the preamble?
Alrighty, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petition in the order that they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the Community Development Office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The Chair will open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against a request. All discussion will be between the Speaker and the board. Please do not, please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time, refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening, but the board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing all the facts from all the parties regarding a petition, the Chairman will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. I don't think I have to do the cellphone pager thing, because it's, you know, kind of irrelevant.
Agreed. So also, when we're conducting this meeting, we'll start off by having the board, or having presentations to the board from the petitioner afterwards. Once all questions have been answered from the petitioner that are given from the board, that's when we will open up the public hearing section. We will ask for anyone who'd like to speak in favor of a petition first, then we will ask if anybody would like to speak against a petition. So when we get to this point where we're opening the public hearing, there will be a phone number at the bottom of the screen you'll be able to dial in. And when I ask for those speaking in favor of the petition, that would be the time to dial *9 when you're on the call, to let us know that that's, that you're calling in favor, and then we will go through each of those calls. Likewise, once we get to the section where we go, if you'd like to speak against this petition, you would also dial *9 at that time, and then we would go through and answer calls that way. Once, once we are done with the public speaking portion, there are, there is the ability for the petitioner to rebuttal any comments that are made. We will then close the hearings and deliberate deliberation tonight. So for someone who'd like to make a motion in favor, we'll do that as, as normal, and then second, and then afterwards. Once we have a second, I will then perform a roll call and find out, I'll call out a name and ask for in favor, against, or abstention on each of these petitions. So with that being said, the first thing that we have is the Strife LLC. They have sent in a letter to the board, which I will read in. So it states, "Dear Chairman and Board Members, the above referenced applications, three, are requesting a continuation from the June 2nd, 2020, to the next scheduled in-person zoning board hearing due to the applicant's concern with the butter availability and potential appeals from a board decision. K&amp;A will be present to further discuss the variances and special exceptions at the next scheduled in-person hearing. We thank you in advance for your consideration on this application. If you have any questions or comments, please contact me at 603-627-2881. Sincerely, Matthew Peterson, Senior Project Manager for Keach Nordstrom Associates." So, before we get started with the voting, my question to you, Tim, is this going to, I take it this will not be heard at the next zoning board meeting because of this?
That's correct. In this case, because they're asking for an indefinite continuance, whoever makes the motion should make the motion to continue to a date uncertain, and they will be required to re-notify a butters at that time once they get back to regular meetings in person.
Okay, so with that being said, I will read in each of the, each of the petitions, and we will one by one vote on, on continuation. So, the first item is a special exception under Section 2.02.3(c)(1) of the zoning ordinance to allow for a residential use in C2 General Commercial District, parcels located at 406 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation, Elderly Housing Overly Districts, Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 099, Case 2019-41. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we grant the, the request for postponement to a date uncertain on this special exception request.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion was made by Lynn Christensen, seconded by Ben Niles, to continue this case. So I'm going to one by one go through. Lynn, what is your, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Patrick, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
And I am also in favor, so that's 5-0-0 to continue that petition. The next petition is Strife LLC, petitioner-owner, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a density of three multifamily residential units in the C2 General Commercial District, whereas one per 40,000 square feet is allowed. The parcel's located at 406 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation, and Elderly Housing Overly Districts, Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 099, Case Number 2020-03. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move we grant the petitioner's request for a continuance on the variance to a date uncertain.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, so motion made by Lynn, seconded by Drew. So Lynn, are you in favor?
Favor.
Patrick, are you in favor?
Yep.
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. So that will be 5-0-0 on that. I do see that Kathleen has just joined. So what I'm going to do is read in the third petition, and if it's okay with you Drew, I will have Kathleen resume her position. So, but for the, for the third one, since you were here for this, I would, I would prefer that you voted on this. So the third one is Strife LLC, variance under Section 3.02, Note 6 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a 2,950-square-foot building 22 feet from the Daniel Webster Highway right-of-way, whereas 50 feet is required, parcels located at 406 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation, Elderly Housing Overly Districts, Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 099, Case 2020-04. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move we grant the request for a continuance on the various, on the variance request to a date uncertain.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben. Lynn, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Patrick, are you in? Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
I am also in favor, so that will be continued 5-0-0. Now, before we move to the next petition, I just wanted to hear from you, Kathy, evening. Oh, you are muted.
Here I am.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we have audio.
Okay, we have audio, yeah, sorry for the delay, I'm late. I'm an old dog, I don't do tricks well.
Just to, just to give you a heads up, Kathy, that all votes tonight are going to be roll call, because the state law requires that. We also, just as a reminder for Rich, just given the technology, what I would suggest is that prior to allowing the applicant to start the presentation that you swear them in at that time, and then we'll just do that for each individual petition as they happen.
Okay.
Actually, alright, that's a good point. Okay, so now we are up to item 6 on the agenda, which is Christopher Ross LLC, petitioner-owner, special exception under 2.02.2(c) of the zoning ordinance to allow a residential use in the C1 Limited Commercial District, the parcel's located at 401 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial, Aquifer Conservation, and Elderly Housing Overly Districts, Tax Map 4D-3, Lot 083, Case 2020-06. Is everybody who will be speaking from the petition on the call right now? So...
Joel and Chris could unmute?
Yep, Christopher, could you unmute?
Sorry.
And could you both raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Alright, thank you. If you could introduce yourselves now, and feel free to go over what you are here for tonight.
Christopher Ross, 401 and 403 Daniel Webster Highway in Merrimack. Joel Sikla, with Christopher Ross here. We're moving to a different room, we might have some backbeat here. I might have to move to a different room here.
That's better, that's better when you close up.
So maybe, let me, if you just give me 30 seconds, I'll move to a different room so we don't get any backbeat here.
Actually, I think you have two microphones going, I think that's what was causing it.
Like I said, it's two laptops side by side. Yeah, I actually muted Joel, and I think if you stay muted, Joel, we can actually hear you relatively well. Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're good now.
This is all new to us.
So, I guess the first thing, the special exception?
Wait.
Christopher, just basically going to read what we have here. Can I just, can I just briefly just take three minutes and explain what and why we're trying to do what we're trying to do?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we're here tonight to talk about this building right here. This one right here. This is 401 Daniel Webster Highway. This is a building that I bought back in 2002. I had invested a ton of money into it to basically convert it into a decapitated barn and turn it into a commercial building. I've owned and operated this building for over a decade, but sadly, I've watched it deteriorate all over again because of the commercial traffic going in and out, in and out, in and out. Additionally, we've also witnessed, and I believe you guys have these pictures, showing the parking problems that we've had on this site with regards to all that commercial business going in and out of the site. We've got, basically, we've got pictures like this. I don't know if you can see this here, okay? But basically, these are pictures showing that when we had a commercial operation in that building, we had no parking. This was what we dealt with day after day, month after month, with cars lined up on the driveway and out into Daniel Webster Highway, to the point where they were parking down the driveway around to the back of Synergy, and it was something that the town was frowning upon. When Mirabella retired, we paused on putting anybody in that unit to try and alleviate some of the parking. And I can show these pictures again if anybody wants to see them. Merrimack Vision Care was soon to follow, because he had bought a building of his own in town, and Joel and I decided we needed to re-look at that building. We could put somebody else in there and put it back to retail, because that's what we're approved for. We can have the entire main floor, the bottom floor, and the upper floor all retail again, and go back to these problems here. But we came up with an idea. We would like to take this building and strip it again and rehab it, bring it back to where I had it in 2002, something appealing like it was, and convert it into approximately 10, 12 small, one-bedroom, some with an office, suites for short-term leasing for our customers here at Synergy. We have found, over the course of time running Synergy, that some customers of ours are looking for something for two, four, six, nine months while they're in transition, while they're having a house built, while they're waiting to be shipped off to their new job, and we'd like to fill that need. And we've looked at it, and the parking requirements that we feel it needs, and we have more than enough parking. We, we have more than enough parking to facilitate our Synergy business and that operation, and there's no more traffic going in and out, in and out, in and out, with, with cars getting backed up and waiting to get into a parking spot. So this is why we would like to move towards this concept versus sticking with what we're approved for, and that's retail. I'm going to read the criteria, unless somebody has any questions before I start. No? Just a question for the Chair. Rich, do you want him to stop after each one, so the board can address each one before he moves on to the next?
Yes, and I would like it if possible if all the board members could unmute themselves, so I don't accidentally roll over them, not realizing that there was a question.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Did everybody get a glance at those photos, whether it be from me or from Tim and the board?
So we were provided with some information in our packets. I don't know that they were necessarily the same, so we have the, we have this map in our packets, and then we have, we have this.
Yeah, okay.
So, those are the items that we were provided, unless I'm, unless I'm missing something, Tim? Or not? Okay.
Well, I, I, again, I want to stress, you know, before we move on to what we're asking for and making a vote, that the visual of, of those cars jam-packed in my parking lot, all the way down my driveway, on both sides of my driveway, and in the middle of the parking lot out into Daniel Webster Highway, that's what we're trying to avoid, and this eliminates that problem.
So, I guess my question is, I think, I think I understand what we're, we're going through, but the purpose for repurposing this building to residential from commercial is to provide housing to customers of Synergy as well as alleviate issues with parking where custom, where there, where a business could be there with a lot of customers that would tie up the parking lot?
Exactly, because when you've got somebody like Merrimack Vision Care, you've got, you know, eight, nine employees, and then you've got their clientele coming and going, he assumes pretty much over half the parking lot. So, when you, you know, we, we just got tired of seeing all the parking spaces taken and then seeing those cars, and the planning board will back me up on this. The cars parked all the way down my driveway, going all the way around to the back of Synergy. My apartment was frowning, we've got to find a way to get rid of this. Where are we going to put the cars, you know? So, this, this, this is a great solution, and it's a great way for me to invent the building, reinvent the building, and get it back to more of a protective state, because you've got somebody living there, they're, they're taking care of it a little bit better, not to mention we've got Synergy caring for it on a daily basis versus putting somebody in there for a commercial use and having people coming and going and just wear and tear like there's no tomorrow. I think, I think Lynn has been around town long enough and, and, and one or two others to know that back in '02, when that building was first done, it was impeccable. After a good 10, 12, 15 years, it's right back to where it was. It's, it's rundown. That's what I'm trying to prevent.
I also imagine that if you have people parking in the Synergy parking lot, that's okay, because that's why they're there anyway.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, alright, so absolutely, yeah, if you could, I'm sorry, Tim?
I just wanted to, again, for the board and those who are watching, emphasize that this is the first of three petitions related to this proposal. The first here that you're discussing right now is the special exception, which would allow residential use to take place in the commercial district, and then the two following cases are both variances that it would allow for the density and a setback issue. So what you're talking about in this initial case is just the allowance of residential in general. We still need to talk about the density and the setback when we get to the other two cases.
Okay, so Christopher, if you could read through each of the four bullets, and then just stop, and we'll ask questions if we have any.
Joel, can you turn your mic on, they didn't hear that?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so I, I just wanted to add that, follow-up on what Tim mentioned. The other two are contingent on the approval of this one, this first one here.
So fortunately, with a special exception, unlike a variance, you simply have to prove that you've met the four points. Where a variance, you have to prove things like unnecessary hardship. You don't necessarily have to prove that on a special exception. So, the, the criteria is different. But, I mean, it is a valid point. Without the special exception, the other two variances would, would be moot. So, yeah, absolutely, if we could just go through each bullet one by one?
Okay, so a special exception is requested to convert an existing structure from a commercial slash retail use to a residential use. The residential usage consists of independent units of short-term transient housing. Such a usage would be ancillary to existing self-storage facility at 403 Daniel Webster Highway, which shares the same site, while eliminating ongoing traffic and parking issues which currently plague the combined site.
I, I apologize, I, are you reading the A on the "applicant shall meet the approval criteria set forth in Section 2.02"?
No.
Okay, that's why, that's why I was confused, I'm like, I don't, I don't really know what you're reading.
So... It's the second page, Rich.
Yep, yep, I just didn't know if I had to read the first page.
Oh, no, we just have to go through the, the, the four criteria for the special exception.
The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use or uses in terms of overall community development because there is a current lack in the availability of short-term transient housing in Merrimack. The majority of all available residential properties for rent or lease require a minimum of one-year lease term. There exists a large number of homeowners and/or renters who are transient in nature due to selling a home, moving, etc. Many of these individuals require only a short-term housing solution, typically three to six months, while a new home is under construction or awaiting availability. These individuals are the same type of individuals who currently utilize a self-storage facility. Number two...
So before we go on to B, does anyone on the board have a question or any questions regarding that? Alright, if you'd like to go ahead and proceed to B?
The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood because the current neighborhood... The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood because the current neighborhood is a mix of residential and commercial retail businesses. Therefore, the proposed use will not adversely affect the existing residences and businesses.
Are there any questions from the board on B?
Okay.
Alright, let's go on to C.
There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians because the current commercial usage experiences an excessively large volume of daily traffic. The proposed use will instead reduce the daily traffic to the site and also eliminate the existing vehicle parking inadequacies.
Any questions from the board? Alright. Oh, sorry, Ben?
For the proposed use, how many parking spaces are available for the transient tenants?
Uh, Joel, I think uh, you might wanna unmute.
Joel?
Joey, we can't hear you.
So the uh, the sheet that you received there does show all the existing parking spaces available. For the Synergy Storage Building, we just need the, the kind of the five there on the corner. And maybe one or two on the, on the other corner of the building, but pretty much all the rest of them are available for the four oh-one building.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Alright. So if you wanna move on to D?
Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed uses or uses because the existing structure is firmly serviced by town and water sewers. Provides integrated parking. The overall design aesthetics of the structure are well-suited for residential usage.
Any questions from the board on D? Or any questions on, from the board on any part of this petition? Well, it looks like we are good. Um, so is there anything else that you'd like to add before we move on to the public hearing portion of this?
No, I mean, I think, uh, I think we pretty much covered everything that we need to cover there. The rest is self-explanatory.
Alright, excellent, thank you. So for everyone else uh, viewing, uh, if anyone would like to speak in favor or against this petition, there should be a phone number at the bottom of the screen that you can dial into. Um, and uh, what I'll ask is, and, and Tim, should we, should we give it about a minute for people to start dialing in?
Uh, sure, I would say a second and a fifth. People are going to be speaking are probably already down the line.
Okay. So with that being said, if anyone would like to speak in favor of a particular petition for the special exception, please hit star nine so that we know that you're interested in speaking in favor. Likewise, if anyone is looking to speak against this particular petition, now would be the time to hit star nine so that we know you're looking to speak against the petition. And I guess uh, for technical reasons to verify, we would see a hand on the screen if someone were looking to speak in regards to the, okay, so at this.
E- either you or I would see, as the host of the meeting, we would see that there would be somebody there.
Okay. So where there's no hand, I would say it's safe to close the uh, public portion of this?
Yes.
Do you have one caller on the line? They have not pressed star nine to make a statement.
I believe that they are here for a different case.
I bet.
Okay, so if uh, if that is the case, we'll close the, the public panel. And uh, any discussion across the board, uh, more motion, or sorry, Tim?
Uh, just uh, to reiterate from the staff memo that if you believe that he has met the requirements, uh, we do recommend two conditions on this particular special exception. Uh, the first that they obtain the variance in case number seven. And then secondly, that they receive uh, site plan approval from the planning board.
Okay. So do I hear a motion from anyone on the board?
Like to make a motion to grant Christopher Ross LLC petitioner owner special exception under section two point zero, two point two C of the zoning ordinance to allow a residential use in the C one limited commercial district. The parcels located at four oh-one Daniel Webster Highway in the C one limited commercial aquifer conservation and elderly housing overlay districts tax map four D dash three lot zero eight three case number ZBA two twenty twenty zero six with the following conditions. The petitioner will also obtain a variance in case number twenty twenty zero seven. And the petitioner shall obtain site plan approval from the planning board for the proposed residential use.
Lynn, you second?
Yes.
Okay, so uh, motion was made in favor by Patrick, seconded by Lynn. Uh, so on that note, uh, Patrick, are you in favor?
I am.
Lynn, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes, in favor.
Kathy, are you in favor?
In favor.
Okay, I as well am in favor, so that will be five zero zero, uh, the special exception passes. Uh, and on that note, we will move next to the variance, uh, same petitioner owner, uh, for variance under section three point oh-two. Of the zoning ordinance to permit a density of twelve multifamily resident units in the C one loaded commercial district, whereas one per forty thousand square feet is allowed. The parcel is located at four zero one Daniel Webster Highway in the C one limited commercial aquifer conservation and elderly housing overlay districts. Tax map four D dash three lot zero eight three case twenty twenty dash zero seven. Um, so following the same process, if you'd like to go ahead, uh, I had to Christopher, Joel, to explain to us a little bit about this particular petition.
Okay, before, before Chris begins and reads the uh, the five points there, uh, just to, I just wanted to make a quick note. The, as far as the density, so we're looking at approval for about twelve units, as Chris mentioned earlier. Uh, the u, the building itself is about fourteen thousand square feet, give or take. So we'd be looking to put twelve, uh, roughly one-bedroom apartments, maybe one bedroom with a slightly, you know, a, a, another room for an office, say. Uh, and uh, then contingent also with, with this would be that the other variance for the addition, which would be like an eight-foot addition off the right side of the building as viewed from Daniel Webster Highway. And what that would be is essentially, if you're familiar with the building itself, as is, there's kind of like a farmer's porch style uh, thing that goes across the front of the building. And what we'd like to do is continue that down the side so that everything all blends in and all looks kind of like, more like an, an old farmhouse. Uh, so with that, in conjunction with the existing square footage, there'd be about just under fifteen thousand square feet of living space in the building. So twelve units, you know, it's, it's not uh, not unreasonable. So we'll let Chris go ahead and read those five points.
Alright, thank you. Yes.
I think, so you're, you're extending the port, you, well, we haven't gotten to that one yet, and I guess I can ask the next one, never mind.
Yeah, I, I actually wanted to add something to that because I, I did want to put some clarification on that. Um, but, but let's, like you said, let's just do this one first and then we'll get to that one. Um, so to meet that criteria, uh, granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest. Uh, the regeneration of the existing structure and the converted self-residential usage will allow continued preservation of a local landmark which has significant cultural value. And to allow for the restoration of the structure to its original colonial style and design. This is achieved while at the same time significantly reducing the daily traffic to and from the site, which was proven to be extremely problematic with commercial usage in the past.
Okay, um, does anyone on the board have any questions regarding public interest? Alright, you can proceed to spirit of the ordinance.
What? Spirit of the ordinance is to preserve the existing small-town look, feel and appeal by keeping urban sprawl and overcrowding to a minimum. This is observed by utilizing an existing structure without the need for additional land-clearing curb cuts or asphalt paving.
Any questions from the board regarding the uh, spirit of the ordinance? Or anything so far? Alright, we'll move on to uh, number three.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it has become apparent that the traffic volume generated by a commercial usage is greater than the subject property can safely accommodate. Granting the variance will reduce the impact of vehicular traffic while also providing a short-term transient housing solution for customers of the abutting self-storage facility.
So I guess, um, I do have a question on this particular uh, bullet, and that's, um, so the customers that will be parking here, um, they could potentially also have traffic. That they could invite in, uh, I, I, I guess I'm not really sure uh, who your clientele is that would be utilizing these units. Um, so I guess, wouldn't it be possible or conceivable that a person renting one of these units could have several friends over and, and could also likely tie up the parking lot?
No, because we watch this place like a hawk and that's something that wouldn't be allowed here. Um, we, we, we're very strict here. I think if you read our years of reviews, if you talk to some of our customers, um, we watch this place like a hawk and there's things that we don't allow. And that'd be one thing that we wouldn't allow. These units are approximately seven hundred, eight hundred square feet. They're small. It's a one-bedroom. So if somebody was to bring a bunch of friends over and uh, you know, there's five or six cars in the parking lot and everybody's jammed into that unit, you can imagine the other people staying there would have a problem with that. Additionally, we plan to add some video cameras on the outside and the inside common areas of that building. We watched those on and off throughout the night. If we saw something like that, as typical, we show up.
Ah, okay, so that, that is explicitly not allowed in this facility?
This is, this is strictly a place for somebody to, they'll be able to put their stuff in storage and, you know, Bob and Mary that are building a house or, you know, waiting, uh, you know, for the transition or whatever they've got going on. And they need a place to stay for three, six, nine months, that's somebody, that's some, that's a need we're gonna fill. That's what we're looking to do. But we run a very tight ship here. Um, we, we, we have a lot of rules here and those rules would just move over to that building also.
Okay, uh, Patrick, you have a question?
So I'm just trying to visualize this. So these things are about the size of an extended stay hotel room.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions from the board? Alright, looks like we can uh, proceed on to four.
Okay. For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. As with any renovation or improvement, the value of the property in question increases. Likewise, as the value of a property increases, the natural tendency is for the neighboring properties to also benefit and increase in value. Restoration of the structure to its former classic beauty and charm will create a visual appeal for the abutting properties. Further granting the variance will have no negative impact on the livelihood of the neighboring businesses.
Alright, are there any questions from the board? Alright, so we can move on to unnecessary hardship?
Uh, the, the unnecessary hardship, the property in question has suffered from the excessive wear and tear of commercial businesses and their associated customer base. Also, a significant portion of the structure has remained vacant since two thousand three as the lack of adequate onsite parking has limited the potential usages. Granting the variance will provide the opportunity to finally and fully utilize the entire structure.
Alright, and um, on to two?
Yep. Granting the variance will provide an ancillary service to the storage facility on the abutting property. Currently, there exists a lack of short-term housing for individuals in transition. The proposed use will provide an all-in-one location where individuals can place their items in storage for care of short-term residents while in between selling and buying a home.
Are there any questions from the board regarding unnecessary hardship? I guess the only question that I have, um, is, uh, the, currently there exists a lack of short-term housing for individuals in transition. Isn't there a, uh, I, I, I guess my only question about that is, isn't there a location not too far away that is a uh, short-term stay hotel?
It is, and they are local. Uh, we've.
Oh, really?
Yep, we've done some research. Um, they typically have, when we've been kind of looking at it on and off for the last nine to ten months, uh, they typically have one, two, uh, at most available or coming available. So the demand is definitely there. So, but we're actually looking to more service our customers. We, 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 we've talked to a lot of our customers over the years and uh, it's just, it's a need that we found that, you know, we, we here at Synergy could really use. So we're looking to kind of plug this into our software and our service and our business and, and, you know, just kind of alter off into that.
Okay. Uh, I, so I guess my question now to the board is, does everyone feel that that meets um, unnecessary hardship or do we need to move on to B? Um, so, uh, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Patrick.
Uh, I mean, and, and I, I guess this probably was under substantial justice and I apologize when I'm asking it that. Um, as far as uh, are these, are these fully furnished? Can we fully, are people getting, moving stuff in and out and are we gonna, are you gonna have issues with multiple moving trucks, you know, coming in and out of there to, you know, to, to pull out, you know, pull out furniture, move people in and out? I mean, if they're only gonna be there for a month or two or three or four months, it seems like it's gonna be, you know, a constant flow of U-Hauls coming in and out of there. I, 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 I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, it's okay, and, and it's, it's actually no different from what we have here at Synergy. We have moving trucks coming and going daily, so, um, we don't, we don't feel that it's gonna be a problem. We, we have that, that issue here. Right, as far as.
You guys have it down, down around the hill where you guys actually have space for those trucks?
No, no, there's uh, there's uh, one, two, three, four areas where people can back a truck up and, and unload and load up.
Okay.
Be, because of the way our building is situated, uh, they can, they can unload at a door, um, level with our office. If you go down the hill, you'll see another door just before you get to the corner. And then when you go through the gate, there's another door in the back of the building. And then when you go all the way around, you've got the loading lobby at the very end of the building.
Okay.
And as far as, as far as how much stuff is getting unloaded, these are very small units, so I, I, you know, I would assume they're gonna wanna bring their own bed, bureau, um, table and some chairs and maybe a couch. But it, they wouldn't be unloading all their goods into this unit.
So enough that you could fit it into probably a small U-Haul?
Yeah, correct.
Alright, cool. Alright, thanks. Sorry.
So I'm just gonna go down the list. Um, Lynn, do you feel that unnecessary hardship was met?
I do.
Okay, um, Patrick, do you feel it was met? Um, Ben, do you feel it was met?
Yes.
Okay, and Kathy? Uh, you're muted, but it looks like you said yes. Okay, so. You're still muted. Here, I'll unmute you if I can. There we go.
Yes.
Okay, excellent, and uh, uh, that's a yes from me, so we will skip, um, B. And this, and um, on that note, we will now move to the public portion. So again, there's a telephone number at the bottom of the screen that you can dial. And uh, I guess we'll start with saying, um, if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor of this particular variance, um, please hit star nine so it indicates to me that you're looking to speak in favor. And again, if there's anyone that's looking to speak against this petition. And again, if there's anyone that's looking to speak against this petition, please hit star nine now to indicate that you're looking to speak against. So it doesn't look like anyone is looking to speak either way. So at that point, what we will now do is close the public port. I'm sorry, Tim.
Captain, again, should the board feel that you want to grant the variance, we recommend the condition of approval for site plan approval from the planning board.
Okay. So um, again, now with the public uh, portion closed, do I hear any comments or emotion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Christopher Ross LLC petitioner owner. Variance under section three point zero two of zoning ordinance to permit the density of twelve multifamily residential units in the C one limited commercial district whereas one per forty thousand square feet is allowed. Parcels located at four oh one Daniel Webster Highway in the C one limited commercial, aquifer conservation and elderly housing overlay districts tax map four D dash three. Lot zero eight three case number ZBA twenty twenty dash zero seven with staff's recommendation that the petitioner shall obtain site plan approval from planning board for the approved use resident, or the proposed use residential.
Second.
Alright, so the motion was made in favor by Patrick, seconded by Kathy. So Patrick, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Lynn, are you in favor? Uh, Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I as well am in favor. Uh, so this passes five zero zero. And uh, before we uh, move on to the next variance, just a reminder that um, there, there is a thirty day appeal window where someone can appeal this. Alright, so on that note, we will now move on to. I've somehow confused my, all my paper here. The third petition from the same petitioner is a variance under section three point oh two of the zoning ordinance to allow the construction of an addition twelve point three three feet from the side property line whereas twenty feet is required. Parcels located at four oh one Daniel Webster Highway in the C one limited commercial, aquifer conservation and elderly housing overlay districts, tax map forty dash three, lot zero eight three, case twenty twenty dash oh eight.
Okay, um, this one's most important to me and I'll explain why. Uh, back in two thousand and fourteen, I had plans to um, finish off the top floor and put my, my residence up there. And I was going to build a staircase coming down, uh, that big blank wall on the south end of the building. You guys, if you can envision traveling north on Daniel Webster Highway, that side of the building, that's just, it's just all wall. And it's, it's just very blank. Um, so that stairwell was gonna kind of break that up and uh, give me access there. Now that's. We want to do this project and that wall has kind of always been an eyesore to me. So what I would like to do is, I'd like to ask the board to uh, please allow me to um, not only build the eleven feet that I was originally approved for, but I'm asking for just another foot. And the reason being is, is when you look at the front farmer's porch that we closed in back in two thousand and two on both the Mirabella wing and the Merrimack Vision Care front. Cosmetically, that's not correct. What needs to happen is that farmer's porch needs to continuously wrap around the entire structure. Because if you envision it, and I wish I could show you, uh, it, it's just much more appealing to the eye. This is why I'm looking to, to add that to the building. It'll break it up nicely and it's, it's architecturally correct.
And and. You are, there you go.
Okay, alright, so uh, just to follow up on, or piggyback on what Chris just said there, there's also a secondary reason for constructing this addition. If you're familiar with that, that side of the building, as Chris mentioned, there's also down the whole side of the building, all the uh, the utility, utilities enter into the building right at that point. So there's, there's a lot of AC condensers, there's all the electrical meters, all that stuff there. There's a telephone pole right there. What we'd like to do, and we've already talked to the power company about this, is we'd put that pole underground, I mean, or eliminate that pole and they would actually do uh, underground uh, horizontal directional drilling to the pole on the other side of Daniel Webster. So that pole would be gone, it'd eliminate that eyesore. And then by doing this addition here, we'd be able to incorporate in the, in the basement portion of that, all of those utilities would be hidden out of sight. So you wouldn't see those as you come in north on Daniel Webster Highway. So it'd be a dual purpose kind of a situation there.
Okay. Alright, excellent. Uh, if you'd like to go ahead and start with the uh, the five points of law?
Okay, uh, number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Granting of this variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the ordinance discourages building within setbacks so as to create uniform standards and maintain distances between abutters, buildings for all new developments. The subject property is grandfathered. It was constructed long before the establishment of the current zoning regulations and is adjacent to an abutters cave parking area. One-story addition will not encroach on any abutters existing structure nor impede the views of any abutters existing structure.
Any questions from the board? Alright, on to number two.
The exterior of the ordinance is to preserve the existing small town look, feel and appeal by keeping urban sprawl and overcrowding to a minimum. This is observed by utilizing the existing structure without the need for additional land clearing curb cuts or asphalt pavement. In addition to the structure, will preserve and enhance the classic colonial style in the structure.
Alright, and any questions from the board? Alright, um, trying to figure out how I can readjust the screen now so I can see everyone. There we go. Alright, and I think we've lost Lynn. Are you, Lynn? Alright, um, I guess let's move on to number three.
Which is? Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because the abutting property is stage and the utilitarian design and granting the variance will inject new life into the immediate area. Construction of the addition will allow for removal of the existing utility pole, relocation of the electrical and fire service equipment to an indoor location and relocation of the ground-mounted HVAC to a hidden location on the roof of the structure. These modifications will serve to increase the aesthetics of the property as viewed from the abutting property and passerby. Most important to me.
Alright, any questions from the board? Alright, uh, number four.
Number four, the renovations and improvements on the property will enhance the curb appeal of the structure and restore the colonial nature of the design. Additionally, the granting of the variance will have no negative impact on the livelihood of the neighboring businesses.
Any questions from the board on uh, values of surrounding properties? Alright, I guess we can move on to unnecessary hardship.
Unnecessary hardship, the property is a historical property and the structure was built long before any zoning, zoning ordinances were enacted. Therefore, adequate modern buffer areas and structural setbacks are non-existent. Granting the variance will provide the opportunity to properly address the needs of the intended use as opposed to it remaining a commercial usage and enduring the associated traffic problems and parking inadequacies.
Alright, and then uh, proposed uses a reasonable one because?
Currently, there exists a lack of short-term housing for individuals in transition. The intended use will allow for the structural renovations necessary to provide an all-in-one location where individuals can place their items in storage and procure a short-term residence while in between selling and buying a home. Feel like we're repeating ourselves, but I apologize.
That's okay, that, that the process can definitely feel redundant. Alright, so I, I guess with that being said, are there any questions from the board regarding unnecessary hardship? Or anything in general? Alright, so I'm gonna go through and ask each uh, person on the board if they felt that unnecessary hardship was met. So we'll start with Lynn. I'm sorry? Lynn, do you feel that unnecessary hardship was met?
I do.
You do? Okay, Patrick?
Yes.
Okay, Kathy?
Yes.
And Ben?
Yes.
Okay, I do as well. So we will skip B. And on that note, we will now move to the public session, which again, there's a phone number at the bottom of the screen. Please press uh, star nine, uh, if you're looking to speak in favor of this petition. Alright, uh, please press star nine if you're looking to speak against uh, this petition. Going once? Alright, we'll go ahead and close the public uh, session at this point and um, and deliberate. Does anybody on the board have a motion?
No, I'm gonna, oh, Tim, what's up?
Oh, sorry, Tim.
Name is the last petition, uh, recommended condition, uh, planning board's.
Alright.
Alright, I'm gonna go three for three. Motion to approve Christopher Ross LLC petitioner owner variance under section three point zero two of the zoning ordinance to allow the construction of an addition twelve point three three eight from the side property line whereas twenty feet is required. Parcels located at four oh one Daniel Webster Highway in the C one limited commercial aquifer conservation and elderly housing overlay districts tax map four D dash three. Lot zero eight three case number ZBA twenty twenty dash zero eight with staff recommendation that the petitioner shall obtain site plan approval from the planning board for the construction of the proposed addition to the property.
Anyone second?
I'll second.
Alright, uh, Tim, I think if you were checking mics, I, I think it might be Patrick's mic.
What?
Uh, there, there's, there's some feedback coming in. Nope, still coming in. I don't know what that is. Um, alright, so I'm gonna go through, uh, and uh, I'm sorry, I just totally missed who seconded this.
I did.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, so Pat, uh, Patrick made the. Made the motion, seconded by Kathy. Okay, I am now with the program officially. Uh, so Patrick, are you in favor?
I am in favor.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Lynn, are you in favor? Lynn? I think we just lost Lynn.
I think Lynn may be the audio issue.
Oh. This is fun.
Not really.
I think Lynn needs to leave the meeting and come back into the meeting. I think it is her.
I am, I am.
Oh, so Lynn, are you in favor of the petition?
That I am.
Oh, okay, so we'll take that as in favor. In that case, uh, this passes five zero zero, all in favor. And again, just a reminder, there is a thirty day appeal window. So, thank you and good luck.
Okay, guys, I just wanted, I just wanna say thank you for taking the time to see us tonight, okay?
Joel and Chris, I, I love that building there. I'm glad you guys are gonna redo that. It's gonna, it's gonna look great. It's, oh, I've always liked that building, so.
You know, that's been, you know, that's been a favorite of mine. I'm looking forward to getting it back to where it was back in two thousand and two and making it stand out again. So amen.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Alright, take care.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that brings us to uh, Vincent Perosi, uh, the third petitioner owner variance under section two point oh two point seven A six of the zoning ordinance to allow an existing retaining wall to remain within the forty-foot wetland setback. Parcels located at twelve Laurel Street in the R one residential by soils in aquifer conservation districts tax map four C lot one fifty-three, case twenty twenty dash oh nine. And uh.
Mr. Chairman, to swear them in?
Absolutely. And is the petitioner on? Oh. I see, uh, okay, uh, if I, are, are you both looking to speak tonight on behalf of this petition?
Yes.
Okay, if I could just have you both raise your right hand and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Uh, so go ahead and tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do tonight.
Please make sure.
Um, I will.
Record and address.
Oh, yes, please, if you could, state your full name and address.
Vincent D. Perosi the third, and I live at twelve Laurel Street, Merrimack, New Hampshire.
And my name is Lisa Fernandez. I also live at twelve Laurel Street, Merrimack, New Hampshire.
Okay. Alright, and if you'd like to go ahead and let us know, uh, what it is you're looking to do um, at your house.
Um, I've been on dealing with most of this, so um, we've started a construction of a retaining wall around the culverts on the edge of our property. Basically, just trying to beautify it, make sure that the leaves aren't blowing in and blocking the culverts because we've had to go down there and clean them out because it was backing up. So that's what we're trying to get approved since it was stopped.
If you, if I don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I can chime in a little bit on this one.
Please.
Uh, this actually is positioned as a result of an enforcement action that was initiated by staff. Uh, we received a resident complaint, uh, that there was work being done adjacent to the brick and in potential violation of the wetland setback. Uh, so after uh, speaking with the Perosis and uh, finding out what had happened, apparently the highway foreman was out there doing an inspection, didn't realize there was the requirement for uh, the wetland setback. So they would go ahead, they did start the construction and uh, primarily complete the construction of the wall. Uh, so it does exist out there today. Uh, what we've done since then is we've then initiated this variance request to try to rectify the situation in, in a, basically out and after the fact, our request to try to address the violation.
Okay, understood, thank you. Alright, so uh, with that being said, since the retaining wall is up, um, if you uh, would like to give us any more of an explanation, that's okay. Oh, sorry, Patrick.
So Tim, the, so the violation is that this is too close to the wetlands?
Correct, uh, this, we don't have an exact measurement as to how close, but there's a forty-foot wetland buffer, which is uh, there's the, the forty-foot wetland setback, which is a structural setback. And then there's a twenty-five-foot no disturb buffer. Uh, we believe that they're okay with the no disturb buffer. However, because the retaining wall is considered a structure under the building code, it's required to meet that forty-foot setback.
Okay, alright, thank you. Can I ask another question? I just, before they get into it, they, you, they were explaining why they were building the retaining wall. Why, why, what was that again? Because for the, because you're having the culvert backup or?
The culverts are getting backed up with the leaves that are blowing from both sides, uh, because we do have an open front yard.
And it went at a slight slope and we would block the culvert.
And between the leaves blowing in and it being all open there, it's just causing backup and we've had to go down there and take the leaves out from in front of the culvert to allow the drainage.
So what happens when it backs up? I'm, I'm just curious, I, I, so.
I end up cleaning the leaves.
Flood, did your basement flood or?
No, no.
So what happens when it backs up?
It doesn't ever get the complete chance to back up. I'm just pulling wet leaves out from around the pipes constantly down at the edge and I wanna beautify the property.
Okay, alright, I, I understand.
Thank you.
Yep.
I do have, if uh, anybody wants to see, I can share my screen. I do have, if uh, anybody wants to see, I can share my screen uh, with the images that the petitioner submitted.
I, I think we, we have the pictures in our packet, right?
Good, yes.
But if there's any- I'm all set. Is anyone else on the board interested in having the pictures on the screen? I, I, we, we don't know what you said, Lynn.
We may need to uh, appoint Drew to uh, vote for Lynn, I think, until the audio issue.
Alright, so Lynn, can you please say what you said again?
I said, I'm good with the pictures that are in the packet.
Okay. And Kathy, you are as well?
I am.
Okay. Sounds like we uh, we have our audio back, that's good. Um, so with that being said, uh, if you guys would like to go ahead and start with the uh, five points of law, and we'll, we'll go from there and just please stop it at the end of every section so that we can prompt for questions.
Uh, the wall will not alter the essential character of the locality because it will stand approximately three and a half feet high and it allows us to have a beautiful level yard to complement with other homes on Laurel Street. The wall will increase the appearance of the property and neighborhood once the grade of the yard is graded and lawn maintained is complete.
Alright, any questions regarding uh, being contrary to public interest from the board?
No.
Alright, so uh, number two, spirit of the ordinance is deserved because?
The wall promotes the general welfare of the town because it makes the area more attractive to view. This will also be substantial in helping make the town more attractive.
Any questions from the board?
I don't know if that necessarily fits in with spirit of the ordinance. I mean, that's a subjective, but I mean, we can, we can continue on, but I, I don't, I don't know if I necessarily agree that that's, is in spirit of the ordinance, but it seems a little more subjective. Not to, not to net pick, but I mean, move on.
Okay, so uh, number three, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because?
The wall will be a safe and attractive structure that will relieve the wind-blown leaves from settling and blocking the culvert openings.
Any questions or comments from the board? Alright, number four, granting the variance would do substantial justice because?
As the property owner, we have contact, uh, contacted the town asking for information to obtain a permit to construct the wall beginning early spring of two thousand and eighteen. We're going into the town clerk, who in turn told us, told me I needed to speak with the highway department located on Turkey Hill Road. At that point, I had numerous contacts with Jeff from the highway department who reviewed my plans for the area and after three ideas he granted is okay as long as I did not disturb the culvert, water flow from the drainage and was not within twelve feet of the roadway.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I, I guess. So that, that was the justification for starting to build this um, before the variance was just that you were given the okay from Jeff?
Yes, we were under the understanding, speaking with Jeff at the highway department and foreman over at town hall that um, because it was landscape, we did not need a permit. Nothing was said about a variance with that being wetlands. We were told it was water drain off.
I see, so the issue, Tim, is specifically because it's wetlands, correct?
Wetland setback because that area is a, it's a perennial stream that uh, is identified on, on the maps of that area.
Okay.
We weren't aware of that. Uh, we, we were told from Jeff at the highway department that they were drainage culverts and that that's why we continued on with the landscaping project.
One of those three culverts actually goes from one side of our property over to the other to avoid us having a puddle at the end of our driveway.
There's actually three pipes in that, those pictures that you have.
So, yeah, and I, I actually, I did go through the pictures. I guess my question to Tim at this point is uh, should somebody from the highway department know that they were in a wetland area?
Not something that they would typically be involved in, so it's, it was, I won't say it was ignorance of the law isn't an excuse, but in this case, based on the information they received from two people at town hall, not specifically familiar with the zoning ordinance, they proceeded under the reliance of the information they'd received from those two individuals and the town clerk and from the highway division, neither of which obviously would be familiar with our requirements. The other item here that's somewhat unique is that this just barely qualifies to be a structure because the, once a wall reaches three feet, that's why it went in definition becomes a structure. So if this were slightly shorter, uh, it would not have needed to variance because it would not have been considered a structure.
Okay, um, that's, that's an interesting one that I have questions on, but that's not for this. So, yeah, are there any questions off on the board before we move on to unnecessary hardship? Alright, so uh, I guess uh, with that being said, owing to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish, distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property.
Could you repeat that because I didn't-
Oh. Yes, I was reading off the uh, heading for unnecessary hardship five A, which states-
Okay.
Owing to-
When we went into the um, the office for the conservation, he told us to do the bottom one. Because there, it's really-
Needed you to have both in case the board did not feel you met the requirements of A and B. The secondary one is a fallback position that allows you to-
Oh, okay. It's a, it's a basically, I'm, why is it not, why is it a hardship? I mean-
Well, there's a section that you'd, there's a section that you'd completed, if you could read into, uh, read what you, what you put.
Five A and five B.
For five A.
Well, what distinguishes the property is that the water flow through the culverts is caused from the water drainage from Laurel Street. The water does not flow to other waters, springs, brooks, rivers, ponds, or lakes. Preventing the wall would not increase health, safety, or attractiveness of the area, and that was based on what we were told.
Okay, and the proposal, the proposed use is a reasonable one because?
The per- purpose of the wall will be reasonable because the wall will beautify the area, allow less debris from collecting in front of the culvert openings and create no additional use of the area.
Okay. And with that being said, um, are there any questions from the board? Alright, I'm gonna go through one by one and ask if each of the board members uh, believe that the unnecessary hardship criteria is met. Uh, so Patrick?
I think it's kind of met, but I would read in the uh, the, they, I would read in the second one as well.
Alright, and in that case, I will stop here and uh, so with that, owing to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of the property. Um, so if you could please read in um, that, that other section.
Due to prior communications with the town of Merrimack, the construction of the wall has been done with the exception of the wall cap and the backfill due to waiting for the frost to subside.
Okay. Uh, so with that being said, are there any further questions or comments from the board? Alright, now what I would like to do is open up to the public session, so uh, for those of you who are watching, there should be a phone number at the bottom of the screen. Um, and uh, what I'm gonna do is ask that if anyone is looking to speak in favor of this petition, please press star nine now, so that I'm aware. Alright, if anyone is looking to speak against this petition, please dial star nine now. Okay. So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and unmute a caller, uh, phone number ending in eight eight. Uh, if you could please identify yourself and uh, so state your name for the record, um, where you reside and uh, then, then please let us know uh, your opinion on this.
My name is Sherry Hastings Lucy and I reside at eight Laurel Street.
Okay.
Um, our concern with the retaining wall, which is being constructed, go back to twenty eighteen when Mr. Perosi began excavating his yard adj- adjacent to the brook and our property. Uh, piles of dirt have remained near the brook and our property since that time. Um, we noticed the retaining wall being erected during this past winter and when we constructed a garage and on the other side of the brook in the past, we were required to put up a barrier to protect the brook and have inspections by New Hampshire DES and the town also maintaining setback from the brook. Mr. Perosi did not erect a barrier to protect the brook and it appeared that he was not meeting the setback requirement. At that point, um, I became concerned. While I have indicated that I do not support granting a variance to Mr. Perosi for the wall, if town and state requirements are met, we do not oppose the completion of the retaining wall. As long as we receive assurances that this is not being constructed to provide for a driveway or a parking area on that side of the home for the numerous cars that residents at that property have and that the piles of dirt that have remained on the front of the property for two years will be removed. Without those assurances, we oppose the granting of a variance.
So we're talking about uh, dirt piles that reside on their property?
Yes, for two years.
Okay. Um, so I, I suppose my first question would be to Tim from this, is there are there any additional, I guess, checks and balances that we need to look at in terms of this?
Uh, the only part of that that the town would have any jurisdiction over would be any additional driveway construction. That would require a right-of-way permit from the Department of Public Works Highway Division. Outside of that, on a single-family residential piece of property, uh, the town does not have specific regulations regarding dirt piles or driveways and parking areas within their private property. The only thing they can regulate on a single-family parcel is the subdivision of the land itself.
Why were we con- why were we instructed to, to put up this black barrier so that nothing would run off into the brook when they haven't been required to do that?
That is something that would have been required either by the Conservation Commission or New Hampshire DES in association with a wetland permit. Uh, and I don't know that the, in this particular case, uh, we're trying to do an after-the-fact here. If the applicant is granted their variance, we will then follow through to ensure that any state permitting is also followed up on as well.
So I'm just taking a look at the uh, at the- Alright, so is there-
May I speak?
Uh, yes, please.
Um, I will assure Ms. Lucy, I can't even remember, like, number eight, that we are not intending on having a driveway going up the back of our home.
Not at all.
That the dirt that is there is from what we've been cleaning out and we're gonna be using that as backfill on that wall.
That's eventually gonna be all grass along the side there with some shrubbery in front of the wall. That way the leaves don't blow in down more. I was sick of cleaning wet leaves out of there. It really sucks cleaning those leaves all winter.
Sorry, language. But that, there is not gonna be a driveway up the back.
Alright, excellent. Uh, so with that being said, are there any further comments uh, regarding the petition from the public? Alright, uh, on that note, I'm going to go ahead and uh, close the public session. Are there any further questions from the board? Alright, in that case, we'll go ahead and um, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Uh, my motion is that Vincent Perosi the third be granted variance on this section two point zero two point seven A six of the zoning ordinance to allow an existing retaining wall to remain within the forty foot wetland setback. The parcel located at twelve Laurel Street in the R one residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts, tax map four C lot one five three, case number ZBA two zero two zero dash nine. And it is the burden, it will be the burden of the petition to demonstrate, oh, no, I'm sorry, read the wrong thing.
Any seconds?
I'll second.
Second from Lynn, so motion made by, just get my cat out of the way.
I admitted I have my dog here.
This, this is why we can't do this from home. So, the motion made by Kathy, uh, seconded by Lynn, um, so I will go through and ask, um, Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Lynn, are you in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, are you in favor? You abstain. Um, Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Um, I as well am in favor, um, so that will be four zero one, uh, with Patrick abstaining. Now, uh, I understand, uh, you, you folks do already have the retaining wall. There is still a, a thirty day appeal process um, that takes place, so just want to make sure that you're aware. With that being said, as of now, the uh, the uh, motion passes, so the variance has been granted.
Thank you so much.
So we can continue work on it and get it finished?
You can, however, within the next thirty days, somebody does, somebody can appeal it and it can be reheard. So anything you do, I mean, already at this point, everything you've done has been at your own risk, but anything you do within the next thirty days is also at your own risk.
Okay. Thank you very much, guys, for your time. We appreciate everything. Everybody stay healthy and safe, please.
You folks as well, thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Alright, so now we're on to discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. I guess, uh, the only thing I can think of is, um, Tim, do you have any updates on when we might actually see the inside of the building again?
I do not. Uh, at this point, at the last town council meeting last week, there was some discussion about potentially reopening uh, portions or on a limited basis, the town hall sometime around June fifteenth. Biggest issue at this particular moment is procurement of plexiglass shields for the various departments to uh, help with the assistance of protecting staff and the public. There will be uh, changes, obviously, uh, six-foot social distancing, uh, monitoring of number of people within the building. Uh, we may actually need to have a similar market basket to monitor outside the town clerk's office to limit the number of people inside the building to maintain proper social distancing. Uh, the town council will be meeting again, I believe, on June eleventh. And they will, we'll be taking up the emergency order, uh, the town's local emergency ordinance again at that time. I believe we'll be seeing a return to normal, regular land use board meetings and other meetings until such time uh, that the ten-person maximum uh, gathering limit is somehow lifted by the governor, so for the foreseeable future, it looks like we'll be doing these Zoom meetings, uh, at least through uh, June and then we'll be reevaluating as uh, things, the next couple of months.
Tim, is, is community development open to be able to come in? I mean, I hate to say this, but I'm actually gonna be in front of this board, so.
Right now, we're primarily conducting business electronically. Uh, we are uh, open and we do set appointments for items to be dropped off and submitted. Uh, so if you call uh, the main number for the department, uh, we can make arrangements for you to uh, make your submissions and do that type of thing.
Can I call and have, I, I have questions, that's why I wanted to-
I call Robert, myself, or Casey, and we'll be glad to help you out.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Does that mean we all have to recuse ourselves and just bring in a new board?
Nice, thanks, guys, appreciate it. All the love.
Um, so any other questions from anyone else on the board at this point?
Nothing to me, but a reminder that in order to catch up on the backlog, we are meeting a second time this month uh, on the regular uh, ZBA meeting day, the last Wednesday of the month, I believe is the twenty-fourth. There is a- Uh, there is a possibility, uh, in fact, I would give it a pretty good possibility that, uh, several of those petitions may also request an indefinite continuance uh, because it's the same attorney representing the client that represented strife today. Uh, and I believe they just have concerns with the, the virtual meeting, uh, format and its challenges in terms of, uh, voter participation and appeals, so, uh, there's a good possibility you may see some of those items continued as well, like we did this evening.
Alright. Um, so I guess we'll move on to, uh, minutes. Go hear a motion?
Prove the draft, that's it.
I think she's motion to approve.
Yep, Lynn gave motion to approve. Uh, does anyone second?
I second.
Okay, Patrick seconds. Alright, so Lynn, you're in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, you're in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, you're in favor?
Yes.
Ben, you're in favor?
I abstain.
You abstain, okay, and I'm in, I'm in favor, so, uh, four zero one, uh, with Ben abstaining. Now for, yeah, that, you know, if we were in person, I, I think at least three of you would be jumping all over this.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Ah, there we go.
Yay!
She's on it.
There you go, I second that.
Alright, I, I, I won't bother with the roll call. Does everyone nod your head if you're in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're good.
Alright, stay safe, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care.
If you want to vote in the June twenty-third town election but don't feel comfortable going to a polling place due to COVID nineteen, voting via absentee ballot is an option to all voters. Request your absentee ballot. Visit the town's website, MerrimackNH.gov, and you'll see a direct link to the request form. Print and fill out your request form and mail it to the town clerk's office at six Babusick Lake Road. Email your request to townclerk@merrimacknh.gov, fax it to six oh three four two three eight five three nine, or leave your request form in the drop box, also located at six Babusick Lake Road, and the ballot will be mailed to your address. Due to town hall being closed to the public until further notice, there is no ability to request an absentee ballot in person. Once you receive your absentee ballot, the town clerk's office strongly recommends returning your ballot through the mail as soon as possible. When returning a ballot by mail, it must be received by five PM on voting day, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Mail your absentee ballot in a timely manner to ensure they're received by five PM on June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Please note ballots cannot be left in the drop box at town hall. This election may be different from what you're used to, but you can be confident that Merrimack wants to keep voting as accessible as possible so that everyone can continue to participate in the democratic process. For the most up-to-date information on absentee ballots, the town election, or for further clarification, please visit MerrimackNH.gov. Click on Town Clerk under the Departments tab, and then Elections and Voting. Thank you for watching.